Yeah, this is our, our third time together here and I know we covered the, kind of the local government tools basics. Just talking with staff, we were gonna end this third session, start talking more about, you know, planning commission role, expectations. To be honest, we, there's so many different things we could talk about. I kinda took some PowerPoints and mashed them together into kind of one, to kind of fit into this session here, but, um, so like meeting management. Do I have near a quick session on, um, like bylaws and setting a vision for the planning commission? And, uh, studying procedures. I think that's one thing that kinda gets left off for a lot of planning commissions is actually setting up procedures, expectations. It's nice to have, kinda be reading from the same script and all have the same talking points and all be on the same page. But that was kinda what we were gonna hit on, unless there was something else you all really wanted to cover tonight. I'm pretty flexible, I just wanna make sure you all get what you need.
Pretty sure we'll have questions as your slides pop up.
I mean, the slides are kinda loosely just a prop, you know, I mean, kinda, I like more of a discussion, so.
I've, I've got a question, I don't know if it is just a general question, uh, and I don't know if now's a good time or after you do your thing.
Yeah, it's a good time.
Okay, um, and actually I was gonna send an email to Allison, uh, but I didn't get a chance to get it all put together. Um, when, you know, I've been on the planning commission not quite a year. And in looking back, when a new subdivision or development is planned, you know, of course, everybody has their inputs. You know, they go by the police department, you know, the fire department, the city school, you know, all of it. So, and I noticed that, uh, just not to pick on the schools, but as far as Jeff Castle's summary is that there's plenty of capacity. And I think the number they use as far as students for this type of housing is thirty point one students for every hundred units. Okay, so we're putting in a lot of development, okay, so you think thirty per hundred, that's not that much, but we got a lot of hundreds out there.
Yeah.
You know, Smith Farm is four hundred by itself. Then you've got, uh, Rossar Avenue, you've got the hundred and sixty-seven unit across from, um, Food Line. You've got two seventy, eighty units going on King Avenue, you know. Uh, so, and I know the, this development's allowed by the comprehensive plan. But does a comprehensive plan take into effect as far as what's the capacity of schools? And let's say you have the bricks and mortar for the school.
Yeah.
You also have to have teachers.
Yep.
Teachers are, we're having trouble getting teachers now. I talked to somebody today about it, you know, math teachers specifically. Okay, that's for the existing enrollment. Then you've got hundreds of other students coming in, gonna require more teachers. So, it's a concern I have as far as, you know, are we looking down the road far enough, we're getting ready to redo our comprehensive plan? Is there some, uh, tools that could be used in there or points to make?
Sure.
To, to prevent this kinda thing or to try to consider it?
Oh, for sure. Yeah, and I, I mean, I think you really hit the nail on the head there of, those considerations are really what the, what the comp plan really should be there for. And of looking at enrollment and what are the enrollment trends? And, you know, what is kind of the level of service on the schools? Um, and the, the needs that the schools might have over time and what's the cost of that?
Yeah.
And so when the comp plan is really looking at, um, uh, trends for development, and that should have tied to it some analysis on what is the cost of this? I mean, that, that's just good governance to know. Um, we can expect to grow this much, what does that mean from a financial perspective? And what do we need to do to prepare for that? And that's really a big part of what the plan is really there to do, is to help you govern that and help you, you know, figure out what services you do need, um, for folks who are moving in. And, and really to, you can do really complicated, um, kind of population forecasts. You can do pretty simple population projections. London Cooper Center is kind of the gold standard on pulling figures of what you might expect in the future in terms of growth. But yeah, you can just take those numbers and do a simple analysis and figure out what is, what is the count look like for students? How many students are leaving the school system? How many students are coming into the school system? And should really be part of that. Now, we talked about last time of buy right development, there's not a whole lot you can do with buy right development. Cause it's done.
And that's tied to the comp too.
Tied to the comp plan, cause the comp plan is the center there and that determines, um, how you update the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance and, you know, your capital investments. And like you said, part of the school cost is capital investments, but then you have the maintenance cost of, gotta pay salaries, you got insurance, you gotta have all these other things that go into it. But yeah, comp plan is where that discussion really should happen.
And I, and I keep hearing that, uh, for every new house, it takes the city about ten to fifteen years to break even as far as what they have to add in services versus the taxes they bring in from real estate, personal property and all this. I find that hard to believe. And I haven't dived into those numbers yet, but I've heard it from a couple of different sources.
Yeah.
So if it takes that long and they say, once that household, house is sold, then the clock starts ticking again. I'm thinking, okay, why are we doing this then? Why are we trying to get hundreds and thousands of new houses in the area if it's gonna? You know what?
Oh, sure. And I've heard numbers like those before. I mean, I think it depends on the type of housing you're building. Uh, there's a lot of variables involved there. I mean, again, it's, it's an analysis you can do with your comp plan. That's one reason why some localities try to, um, limit housing and kinda push it over on their neighboring jurisdiction.
Yeah, the ghost county.
Because, cause there's, there's a cost to housing and generally speaking in commercial, there's a revenue for that. Cause you, um, businesses don't generate, you know, school kids and, uh, health needs. And generally their, uh, police coverage is lower and, but they generate sales tax, maybe meals tax, uh, property tax, machine tax, all these other revenues. So you, you have some communities like, um, and RICO has a really nice balance of commercial or residential versus non-residential. Other communities, it's really residential heavy and, and that is a cost, something to consider.
One thing you said last time, and I should have written down the, the parlance and I didn't, made a note of it, I didn't, is we were talking about in the context of like proffers and new development. And you, I, in my brain, I filed it away as a connection fee, but that's not exact, it wasn't the language you used.
Yeah, impact fee?
Impact fee.
Yeah.
And you, I think you said, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, something like they're sort of disfavored or they're not, not very common.
In Virginia.
In Virginia.
Across the country, they're very common. In Virginia does, um, proffers. I think something like nineteen states do proffers. Only one really does cash proffers the way we have in Virginia. Most states have impact fees. Our impact fee legislation is kinda pretty cumbersome. But I think there might be one or two additional localities that are using them. It's just, it's a really difficult thing to use.
So that's, that's why they're not common is it's, is it, it's politically challenging or the like, the code is?
The code makes it very difficult.
Okay.
Um, but it's a possi, you may, it's, it's a tool out there. There's other tools like tax increment financing. Special taxing districts, um, and all sorts of different tools you can use to help, um, kinda cover some of those costs.
I think one of the things that has concern, I've, I've been thinking about our frustration with density. Not frustration with our inability to control or dictate certain things on density. And I think what it comes down to, and I, I was sort of thinking, I, I share that concern. But I don't think of myself as like anti-development or anything like that. And so I was trying to sort of put a, a fine point on exactly what that concern is. And I think Phil put a good, sort of hit the nail on the head, the concern is a services gap. And I think there's a perception that we already have something of a services gap. Or we may be approaching a services gap and we're all looking around because of all of this buy right development. I think that's the concern we all have is what is the impact on these things? So that's, that's the reason I asked that question. Um, you know, is that something that as a planning commission, when we write our, when we, when we start talking about writing a comprehensive plan, we should say to staff, hey, this is something we'd like to explore? If it is, if in fact it is, the, the, um, impact.
Impact fees, yeah, I mean, I, for sure. I mean, um, most comp plans are, those specific actions are tied under a structure of objectives and goals, so just kind of laying what is it your goals are. One of those goals might be to provide high quality service and infrastructure, you know. And the, there should be an analysis in there to determine exactly what that is. It shouldn't be guesswork. It shouldn't be like, uh, I don't know, this feels like too much residential or this feels like too much that. I mean, there's numbers here, there's ways to calculate this. So, put numbers behind it. I do caution a little bit on it. I think there's, I'm gonna quote Jesse Richardson who's, uh, West Virginia Law School. And, uh, his, his quote, I heard him use was, um, local governments don't control growth. Markets do. Markets are what determine growth.
Right.
And if you're a desirable place where people wanna live, um, then they're gonna wanna move there. And what localities can do is they can manage that growth, but they really, they can't stop it. They can't say, no new residential development. There's some places that try and usually what happens is, by trying to stop residential development, they just push it outside of their boundaries. Um, and then they get all the traffic of people trying to drive in when they commute in. But what really gets, uh, growth is, are there jobs there? Is there a high quality of life? Uh, those jobs, are those good salaries? It's those things that determine growth. And if you try to, if you try to cap the residential growth, what you could inadvertently do is cap supply as demand increases. We all know our supply demand curves, that's more affordable how, uh, more expensive housing. So then you start running into different problems. So everything is a balance. Everything is a, um, when it controls densities, but to what degree? And you need numbers and analysis so that you can make that decision confidently and you're not just kinda guessing at what feels right. So I would encourage you when you go into the comp plan, effort to just really push for good data and good data analysis. And really it should all start there. Um, public engagement is, is data. So that's included as well, but not by itself. There's also the secondary data sources that you can use to calculate these things. And you're not gonna get a hundred percent certainty, but you're at least gonna get into kind of this area of comfort where you feel more confident with what those numbers are, what that density is and what's appropriate.
Yeah, I, and I, one of the struggles, you know, I just, for example, right, we, we have a new development on Rossar and they're moving dirt right now. And when we, I, I think there was no, we did the turn lane analysis, then it said there was no turn lane warranted for that one, right? Right turn taper in the left turn lane. Yeah, and so there's this place where I feel like we find ourselves on a regular basis. Where we look at something and everybody says the numbers don't support this. Right? And the turn lane analysis is an easy one, cause we bumped into that one before.
Yeah.
They, they obviously need, I watched, somebody almost hit a dump truck trying to turn left there. They need that turn lane, right? Like common sense says to me, it seems like common sense that they need that turn lane. But so when the, when the data doesn't support something or doesn't support common sense, how do we manage that in the comprehensive plan? Like how, and if the data doesn't support it now, I feel like part of our job is to plan for five years and ten years from now. Because, you know, as soon, maybe the data doesn't support it now, but then that development goes in and the next one goes in and now it needed to happen. And the taxpayers are on the hook for it to get it done. How do we manage those kinds of issues in the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, well, one I'll just give support for, the comp plan is a twenty-year vision, but I think it's important to have kind of a five-year and a ten-year kind of increments in there. Because if you just have a twenty-year vision and that's it, not a whole lot gets done. So, um, yeah, I think definitely having that piece in there. I'd say like, y- y- you mentioned as an example, like, uh, traffic modeling to determine a turn lane. I'm just working with a lot of data in the past. Sometimes the data is missing something. Sometimes you pull the data, you do the analysis and it says this. But sometimes there's something that's missing that the data's just not catching. And that's where the public engagement part comes in, cause the public engagement helps you calibrate that a bit and, and helps you figure out like, wait a second, this, this is kind of, here's like our common sense test and here's some data and this isn't matching up so well. Sometimes you find that just what I might think of as common sense is just a perception issue. And like the data really is what it is. But other times, kind of that public engagement side should, would reveal to us, hey, wait a second, there's more here, the data's missing. Let's take a look at this. And it, it would kind of prompt us to then dig deeper of, okay, what, what is the data missing and what else do we need to pull out of here? So, yeah.
One of my biggest hangups is projections.
Yeah.
So all the data is recorded on existing traffic. Every new development records data on existing traffic, doesn't warrant it. It does not take into consideration the other eight hundred fifty units that have already been approved on projected traffic. Each individual study only records existing traffic plus the units that they're, that they're, uh, putting forth, uh, in the study to project out that. But it's not, and I'm, I'm wonder, and I don't have for certain, so this is a question I've had, whether the school's doing the same thing, whether we have three hundred fifty students right now, we can take another thirty. Okay, approved, four hundred. We have three hundred fifty students right now. We can take another hundred and twenty, approved.
Yeah.
And next thing you know, we have three hundred fifty students and you have four hundred unaccounted for projections.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, I'm wondering whether there's something we can do as far as accumulating the traffic studies of existing units that have been approved. And then forcing any new approvals to take those, or any new petitions.
Yeah.
To take those, uh, those traffic studies into account when they're doing it. Cause every, every one is, if we said, we haven't taken any of the other ones, but everybody that lives, or of all the houses that are already built drive the street, it's good, but it's not taken into account. That's two hundred fifty and we're putting six hundred across the street.
Yeah.
You know, is that, how is that gonna impact? Especially when driving to the high school and that's the only road that they're gonna go to to get to high school.
Yeah.
And so on and so forth.
Me, I, made for sure and, uh, you hit on a couple of really important points here. One is, I don't like projections either. And that's why, um, you, you have projections and you have forecasts and those are two different, very different things. And one is pretty cheap and easy to do, but it's not as accurate. The other one is a lot more accurate, but it's a lot more time intensive and it's a lot harder to do. But, um, really having that forecast put in place is, is kind of a different level there. So, um, yeah, and then I'm, I'm trying not to do any like EPR commercials here. But other than planning, we also do engineering, so we do traffic engineering. And, and that, that's one thing we do is we look at not only what's on the ground now, but what are some other potential projects that it, that could pop up by rights that you don't have control over. So those are some things that are important to look at, for sure.
I thought in theory, like the most recent Hopman Parkway development we approved, looked at the traffic data, said it didn't warrant it, but that traffic data was two years old.
And it didn't take into consideration.
I thought it did take in consideration into the future developments. At least that was the minutes that I read.
Mm-hmm.
The, the most recent Hopman and King, but we did ask them to do a turn lane warrant analysis. It did take into account all of the, um, approved developments, including the, um, CUP for those townhouses that were coming in just off the street.
So that was the Hopman or the King?
That was, that was the Hopman and King subdivision, um, so right at the corner of Hopman Parkway and King Avenue. So that development did take into account.
Not the one across from William Perry, which is the one I was thinking of. Cause I asked them that and they, they had said that, um, they did a data analysis that if every, if every vehicle on King Avenue traveled the road every day.
That one was a little different. That one they took into account, I believe, a one percent birth rate, um, along King. And my memory is a little fuzzy on that one, since it was placed early, much earlier this year, but I believe you are correct, that one did not take into account.
There, there's other tools too, um, I know, so there's traffic models. And then there's transportation models, uh, or travel demand models. And there's also land use models. Like, w- we, we use a program to do land use models too. So we'll put all the property data in there and we'll run different scenarios and say stuff like, if these parcels that are buy right, what if they develop? And it, it changes all the figures. So like, all the numbers switch and change and you can feed that into your travel models and all that, so. There's a lot of different models and tools you can use.
Curious, because it kind of, for me, this question relates back to the opening statement you made about, sort of the data points you were hoping we got out of this today. So what is our role?
Yeah.
I don't, do I, I don't need to be an expert in traffic data.
Yeah.
Uh, what is my role in that point to ask the right questions? Um, I mean, sort of where does, where do I fit? Cause I don't wanna have to know what VDOT was two years old data and what does it look like? I'm just, you know, wanna know what current code is and, you know, where, where is my role in this?
That's a great segue to some slides if we wanna jump into them.
Let's jump in.
After we decided we were gonna look at the slides and then we went off.
No, hey, I, I, but I mean, those are important questions you had and, you know, again, uh, on the data part and, you know, when you do the comp plan, education should be a chapter in there. You don't see that all the time in comp plans, but I think it's important. But yeah, just going back to your question about what your role is, I mean, this goes way back. I mean, we're almost to a hundred years now of where did planning commission come from? That came from the, the planning enabling legislation that got passed back in nineteen twenty-eight. And if you, if you, you know, look back at that original legislation, they called master plans, but it would be comp plan now to guide development. And if you, if you, you know, look back at that original legislation, they called master plans, but it would be comp plan now to guide development. Really, the purpose of the Planning Commission is, from the beginning, is, one, to be a non-political group. You have the elected officials, they are the local legislature, they are the policymakers, they make the policy and the laws and regulations. And then, the Planning Commission, who are not elected, but they're appointed, are really appointed to put in place, really as a venue to deliberate. So, as you mentioned, yes, you don't have to be an expert in traffic models, you don't have, it's not your role to be, you know, a land use planning savant here. But really, is to be the venue to bring all those experts into that venue, and to hear all of their perspectives, and to hear their different arguments, uh, for the decisions that you all have to make, or the recommendations you make as a group. So, part of that too is, the Planning Commission, um, really the intention is to have more of objective view. I mean, we all have biases and opinions, and, you know, we, we can't separate those out. But, uh, really, in the Planning Commission, uh, role of trying to remove some of the subjectivity, and really keep it objective of, what is the data? Does the data look right to us? Who else can we bring in to help validate this? Um, if we're discussing housing, we'll bring the housing expert in, we'll bring the whoever we need here at the table. So, um, really, as a group, it's not to be the experts necessarily, but to help bring those experts to you, and to give you the information that you need to make a confident decision. So, part of also the role of the Planning Commission is knowing that the elected officials, their, their docket's pretty busy. I mean, obviously, y'all are busy too, but keep in mind that the zoning ordinance is only one chapter in the local code. Subdivision ordinance is only one chapter of the local code. There's a lot of other chapters in there, and the elected officials are having to deal with things like personnel, um, tax policies, all the way down the line, all those different chapters and issues. And it's just, in order for them to do their job, they need a group to pull these experts in, to deliberate objectively, and to work through some of these issues, so they don't have to spend all their time on that. And so, I, I've heard some planning commissioners will say, well, we don't have legislative authority, we can't pass policies, we don't pass ordinances. What the heck are we here for? Um, and my response to that is, you're here to, to work through all these issues, so that when it gets to the decision makers, the elected officials, they can feel confident that the public's been heard, that the experts have been brought to the table, and that you've brought an objective view to it. And that last point there, that the decisions that are being made are really coming from the comprehensive plan, what those policies are. Again, do we have our own opinions of, you know, what we think, uh, what we believe? Yes, of course, and we, we can't separate that entirely. But really, the comprehensive plan is really our guide, going back to that original twenty, nineteen twenty-eight legislation, and to really bring that objective view, and to hear the experts who can come in and help us make good decisions. So that's the real value of the Planning Commission, is to really work through those issues. Just a few other, you know, basics, the other thing about the Planning Commission is really, um, obviously, city council has their meetings. But the Planning Commission also serves this role, almost like a conduit between the local government and the citizenry, and the stakeholders, and the businesses, and the community. Um, so in many ways, you're kind of the front desk of the local government. A lot of the meetings, uh, that's what people see of the local government. So, it makes it even more important that the Planning Commission is confident in their decisions, that they have what they need to be successful, um, that you all work together as a group, as a unit, um, as opposed to everyone going rogue and doing their own thing. So, part of that too is having a positive meeting environment, obviously, um, you know, fair, you know, respectful, attentive. I'm sure this group is checking those boxes. I had been in some communities where some of those things haven't been so much there. I had, uh, one planning commissioner, uh, threaten an applicant one time. So there's been a few stories over the twenty years I've worked in places that, kind of, kind of interesting to watch. So kind of, that, those basic sides, but also, now, one more step on the, on the pyramid here of just, uh, having organized meetings, you know, running the meetings efficiently, um, kind of, you know, making sure too that, you know, there's controversy in this room. And if you, if you haven't seen it yet, you will, uh, people are gonna get mad, people raise voices, uh, people sometimes get a little bit out of hand. Um, and really knowing that part of the role here too is for the Planning Commission to make sure that the community is heard. And people might not like the final decision that comes out of it, but they at least feel like they've been heard, they've had their say, and that they were respected, and that they've been part of the process here. And, um, really, trying to dump all that on the, on the council, they just, it, it would be impossible for them to function, for the local government to function, if all that got just dumped on them. So they're just, it's a really important role here at the Planning Commission. There's a little bit of conflict mediation involved in it, um, of, we hear from experts, from the transportation planners, from other folks that come in, but we also need to hear from the public, because they're experts too, they're experts in their community, because it's their community. And also being aware that, um, you know, when people come in and they're, they're kind of charged up and a little angry of, you know, that's not a bad thing, that shows they care. The places where I get most concerned is when you go to all these meetings and no one's even there. Just no one's showing up, it's checked out. That's when I get concerned. When I see angry citizens, I don't, I don't like to get concerned about it. To me, I, I kinda like to see that. You gotta mediate it, you gotta kind of work through the issue, but, but I, I kinda like to see that.
You know, from, as far as controversy or, uh, any disagreement, what I'm seeing, the, the main cause of that, or where it stems from, is the comprehensive plan, the by right. You know, because Smith Farm, I had several people say, why, why'd y'all vote for this, approve this? Well, our hands were tied, we.
Yeah.
But people need to realize how important that comprehensive plan is.
The comp plan is important, um, for sure. But also, you know, keep in mind, comp plan's also a guide. So, you don't have to follow the comp plan with like a rezoning case. It's a good idea to, um, and if you don't follow it, it's good to have some pretty good reasons why, why. But the state code does lay out, um, the justification to approve or deny, um, a rezoning case or a conditional special use permit. So long as you stay within those bounds, you're okay. And even if something does, if it is consistent with the comp plan, it's good to follow the comp plan. But, there's other issues involved, like capacity issues, um, you just need to be really clear about it, but you, you can go against it. Now, if it's in the, in the zoning ordinance, eh, there's nothing you can do about that. Unless you wanna go back and update the zoning ordinance. But if you have an applicant right here in front of you, that's not enough time to go through and update the zoning ordinance. Or if it's just going through staff, there's not much you can do at that point. So you only have that ministerial authority. But when you're making those decisions on rezon, like ZMA's or SUPs, um, keep in mind that you're, you're not tied to the comp plan.
DMA, SCP.
Oh, zoning map amendment? So a rezoning case, or an SUP, or special use permit, or conditional use permit, or same, interchangeable.
Yeah, I think the challenge that we faced with Smith Farm, in particular, was just a lack of, was try, trying to educate people about why we felt like we had to make that decision when people were already all fired up about it. And weren't really interested in listening to us. And I, I know several of you stood outside with me and tried to talk to all of those. I, I talked to everybody, including the guy who was very upset with me that he didn't get to speak the second time we talked. And when I explained to him what I felt like our decisions were, he calmed down a little bit, and was like, you know, I don't like it, but I understand. I think it's just a lack of information. I, I try, I try to make sure, as often as I can, that we mediate, that we get ahead of those issues and communicate. And maybe it's just me pontificating and it's hot air, but I try to, when we're, when we're in those situations, I try to address some of that stuff as the chair.
Oh, yeah.
That was a unique situation, because a lot of people that had purchased property around Smith Farm, the conditions of the ownership of Smith Farm changed in the past year. So it initially was supposed to belong to the city of Waynesboro. And then, the city council voted a year ago, or two years ago, a year and a half ago, to allow the person that had rights to use that property to have ownership of that property.
Okay.
And then, it became a by right because of the zoning ordinance. So, you people were kind of caught off guard and didn't think, you know, they initially thought that that property was reserved for a park in Waynesboro. But zoning ordinance had it there that way, and city council voted to allow that property to pass to the hand to the person that had been using it for however many years. So, it, it caught the, it caught some of the neighboring people, but again, they had neighboring properties.
Yeah.
They were notified that, you know, by mail, that, you know, there was something happening with, I'm sure.
Yes.
So, and they just didn't come. And it snuck by, it caught me off guard, I didn't know about it. Um, but, that, that was, that was a very unique situation, that, you know, in a two-year span, you know, people went from thinking, you know, I have this great field, you know, and a good line of sight, to, I'm gonna have to fight traffic to get out on the road. But I do think so, and it makes sense, when the comp plan's laid out, if it's thorough, and you're projecting, and you're zoning for by right, and you're, you know, calculate, okay, this many acres of, of RVs, twelve, or, you know, single-family home can, can hold four hundred sixty. All right, you know, traffic here, you know, is the city gonna have to upgrade anything in order to maintain, to, um, maintain that when this develops out? Because the comp plan's anticipating that, that's why it's zoning it that way. So that would make sense why they didn't have to, you know, add another lane either way. The only caveat to that is if they do a CUP or a PUD, and they change the density level in an area, then the likelihood of them potentially having to add something that wasn't projected on the comprehensive plan from sixteen years ago is a little greater. But if they maintain that same density, it would make sense, I mean, they might have to do a turn lane, uh, depending on the number of entrances and exits, uh, projected, but more than likely, they're not gonna have to widen roads, because the comp plan from two thousand eight would have projected for that density of traffic. So, rezoning would mess us, because you don't project for that density of traffic, for, you know, commercial use as opposed to residential. So that would be someplace where, you know, we would really get hamstrung. But I think a good comprehensive plan would explain, at least good for the time, why there hasn't had to be a lot of extra traffic modifications when it's being done in an area that was owned that way.
Well, to add what Phil was saying of, people need to understand how important that document is, yes, a hundred percent. Again, that's why the state code requires it, because it is important. And, um, again, encourage you, as you move forward with your comp plan, one, don't treat the comp plan as just a document, it's the process too. And, um, it's a very unique opportunity for you all as a planning commission. Many times, you're reviewing cases, things are coming at you. But this is an opportunity for you to go out and actually build that relationship with the community. And that is essential, and what Will was saying too, of, of trying to talk to people and, and to get out there to the community. Comp plan's such a great opportunity to do that, to really listen, to really get out there to them, show the value of the Planning Commission. I was gonna talk about this later, I'll, I'll slide it in here real quick of, having other procedures for the Planning Commission, I think, I think is a great thing to have. I'm a big believer that planning departments should have a mission statement and a vision statement. If the only thing you're doing is approving or signing applications, you're not a planning department, you're a permitting department. And so, uh, same thing goes with the Planning Commission. If you're just checking off boxes, you know, no one wants to just check, check off boxes. So, kind of, what's your mission? As a group, what, what is it? Why are you here? Why are you in this seat? You're here for a reason. I mean, it's, it's Tuesday night at almost eight o'clock, you could be working on, in your house, or, you know, watching a, it's Monday night, you could be watching Monday Night Football, you're doing something, but you're not, you're here. That's, that's a pretty big thing. So, um, what's your individual mission, what's your mission as a group? Um, I think is really important, I think, I think all the data shows, companies that have mission-driven statements are eight times more successful than those that don't. And I think, we don't track those things in local government, but I'm willing to bet it's probably pretty similar. So, I believe in things like that, I also believe in, even commissions having things like communication plans of, yeah, that's a big challenge of, um, especially with social media these days. I've gone into meetings where there's a huge dialogue going on on Facebook, or whatever people are using, there's a lot of misinformation flying around. And then I walk in as staff, and suddenly I get bombarded with things that I'm just not prepared for, so. Worked at a county that actually monitored social media to see, you know, what are people talking about? I had one meeting where it was my first public hearing. I was a wee lad, right out of school. We had six public hearings, all of them really made people angry, for different reasons. I walked in, it was standing room only, from the wall up to the dais. There were people like sitting and leaning in front of the dais, went into the hallway, and into the parking lot. All, it was like going to a concert. And I squeezed my way through, people were booing at me as I was coming up to the podium. My boss came up to me and said, hey, well, I'm not feeling so good tonight, uh, good luck tonight. Patted me on the back, and then left. So it was just me. So I had to climb up on the podium, and sit on the podium, and yell to the crowd, my staff report. And that was a situation, just, it was just a misunderstanding. I mean, what people thought we were doing, completely false. I mean, we were doing something completely different, but I kind of got the word on what people were mad about. And when I climbed up on the podium to scream out to folks, I made clear, like, okay, first of all, we're not taking away your hunting dogs. So if you're here for that reason, we're not doing that. Uh, and then, like, twenty people walked away. And then I was like, the other thing, we're not doing this. So, so we were able to kind of shift the narrative a bit. But just be aware that when people come in this room, they might be kind of charged up, and kind of having some sort of communication plan of, how do you all as a commission communicate to the public? How do you get out there? Me, it's important that you trust each other, but it's also important that the public trusts you, which is another important part about being objective. We, we have our opinions, you know, it's hard to separate those out, but just being a fair, objective body, and building that trust with the community. So when they do hear something outrageous, they're, you know, like, oh, you know, I know Will. They're not gonna do anything crazy, like, that, that's just hogwash. Or at least, like, having that trust there, so that when you make those decisions, there's just, there's more support for you all as a group, there's more support for the Planning Commission. Really having a, what is your message? How are you gonna get that message out there? I think that's fair game. Um, I'll keep going on slides till we have something else we wanna jump on. I like just talking, so, no worries on my front. You know, state code has, you know, some requirements in terms of, of meeting. I mean, there's plenty of sections in the state code of, of how many times you need to meet, and how, where you need to meet, and how that works. One of them is quorum, is the minimum amount of people you need to have a meeting. One thing to be aware, I'm sure y'all have heard this too, of, you know, usually if you have three or more members, that counts as a meeting. If you're talking about business. Now, if three of y'all wanna go to a UVA football game, I don't know why you'd wanna do that, but if you went to a UVA football game, and wanted to tailgate and just hang out, um, you can do that. But as soon as you start talking business, eh, it's a meeting. Um, you gotta be careful with that one. Um, so y'all have heard that one, but one thing that trips folks up is things like a meeting within a meeting. So if you're up here, and there's three, three of you, there's multiple of you texting each other, technically, that's public record. You wanna avoid kind of a meeting within a meeting. I think I mentioned once before that one of my, one of the planning commissions I worked with, they would take a break, and they'd go to the restroom, all of them, and then they'd keep talking about the case, and I was like, can't do that. You know, there's like five of them in the restroom, all talking about the rezoning case, and I have to go in, like, guys- And I have to go in, like, guys, you, you can't do this. This is, you're holding a public meeting within a public meeting, and this is not advertised, unless you want me to advertise that there's a public meeting in this room, which I don't think you want me to do. Some others I knew would go out and do a smoke break, and they would, again, that's a meeting, you're talking business. Three of you are out here, you have a quorum, it's not advertised, everyone in this room over here thinks that they're at the meeting, but there's a meeting over here. You can't do that. So, um, you just have to be careful with, with those things. Again, I think, uh, the first time we chatted, I'd mentioned just being really careful with FOIA, Freedom of Information Act. Anything you put in an email, if it's, if it's on a city device, if it's on a city, city email address, or even if it's on your personal email address, but you're talking business, it's public record. If you're texting with each other about business, that can be, that could be public record too. Someone knows to FOIA that. I think I might have mentioned, I like to doodle a lot. And I was doodling, this is twenty years ago, so it's okay now, uh, for me to talk about it. I was doodling my, um, my board, and I was doing little caricatures of them, it wasn't anything too terrible, but I was making caricatures, I certainly didn't want them to see the caricatures that I was doodling of them. But I was twenty-three and I was a decent artist, so. And I was writing notes to someone next to me, and I, I really didn't want anybody to see those notes. But as soon as the meeting was over, someone FOIA'd it, uh, the next day, they came in and they took all my notes. So the doodles, the notes I made to the person next to me, all of it, all got taken up and all got put into the FOIA request. And it all went to whoever it was who made the FOIA, so, um, you just gotta be really careful with that. Also being careful, just even leaving people voice messages or, I've seen lots of folks text each other, and someone takes a screenshot. One of my colleagues that happened to him, they took a screen, screenshot, they posted it on X, boom. Now, it's out there for everybody to see. So just anything, you know, anything that could end up on that front page of the newspaper, just being careful with that. Uh, and that goes back to building trust, fairness, being objective, all those things there. It is an important part of, of that, and also just for your own, for your own well-being. Not getting all that stuff out there. Yeah, some, some common issues I hear from planning commissions is, you know, meetings sometimes kinda can feel a little bit out of control. They might last a little longer than they should sometimes. Uh, maybe that lack rules or procedures. A lot of these things can be kinda knocked out with, um, really having as a group, having procedures down of how do we manage? If there's a conflict, if someone is angry, what do we do? Don't wing it. You gotta figure that out before that it ever happens. So, someone comes in, they're angry, Will, you're the chair, someone's screaming at Phil, kind of talk through that, uh, like, okay, so how are we gonna do that, how are we gonna deal with that? And just, um, yeah, I, I, I think, I think it's important, I mean, Will's clearly just gonna let that go.
We're not, we're not, we're not doing that.
But like, um, you know, just kind of, the other thing with that is sometimes you might have a decision that you know is the right decision. It's following the comprehensive plan. It's got, based on the data, you've gone through all this work, you know it's the right decision. But you come in this room and there's a bunch of really angry people who are screaming at you, and they don't like it. It's gonna happen, if it hasn't happened already. And talking through things like that of, you know, um, what do we do in that situation? How do we manage that? Just 'cause you got fifty people in here who are really angry, do those fifty people represent every single person in the city of Waynesboro? Maybe, probably not, I don't know, depends on the situation. So again, um, of just kind of really playing through that before it actually happens is important. Because otherwise, if you just kinda go in and wing it, it's a lot of stress. And you might look back on the decisions made and not feel quite as good about it. Moving on to the chair. Really important, uh, position, obviously, you know, in that chair role of really setting the tone for the meeting, like setting the tone for the group. Maintain that professional, respective, respectful environment, being a servant of the group but not the boss. Also acknowledging whether it's Will or somebody else, kind of, whenever you all select the chair, uh, that that job is not easy. It is not an easy role. Everything that needs to be managed during a meeting, really, it eats up a lot of, a, a lot of, um, mental capital to try to run all those things at once. So, also knowing as a group, kind of what that role entails, so you can help each other out, especially in those difficult meetings. Usually, uh, also just a, as chair, could also, if you have a speaker up here, I think, what was it, Seinfeld once said, they did a study and showed, uh, the number one fear is public speaking. And in that survey, the number two fear was death. He was saying that at a funeral, people would rather be in the casket than doing the eulogy. And so, it's something that makes people nervous, and when people from the public are here, they're gonna feel nervous coming up and saying something. And sometimes the chair has to kinda help them along a little bit, help encourage them, make sure they feel comfortable doing that. Uh, also, you know, obviously maintaining order, any interruptions, outbursts, everything goes through the chair. So, if, if someone, if an applicant or if someone needs to make a statement, they cannot just get up and make the statement, they have to get the chair's attention, and the chair needs to acknowledge them. Or, uh, if someone on the commission wants to make a statement, you have to ask the chair of, can I make, you know, add to this, make a statement? The chair directs the discussion, everything goes through that chair there. Also, keeping in mind, um, you know, I, I've seen some applicants will come in and there's some discussion going on up here, and the applicant has an answer, and they'll just get up and say, I can answer that question. And that always makes me cringe, 'cause it's like, no, that's not how this works. You have to get the chair's attention, and then the chair acknowledges you, and then you can get up and, and make your point. Also, if you have a rezoning case, if it gets denied, for an applicant, that's nightmare news, 'cause you can't resubmit the rezoning case for a year. So if they feel like it's not going well for them, and they might get a denial, they might try to defer or even withdraw, just so they don't have to go through that year wait again. But they have to get the chair's attention, they can't just say, I wanna withdraw, they have to, the chair has to acknowledge them. There was one, one time I was in a meeting, the applicant was trying to do that, the chair saw him, they locked eyes. The chair knew what he was doing, and the chair just completely ignored him and just went through the meeting and it got denied. And, um, I don't really know why that happened, but I wouldn't say that that's good practice. I think, again, objective, fair, respectful is always, um, always what you wanna go for. Obviously, uh, time management, how long do you guys give folks to talk? Four minutes? It's generous. A lot of places do three. Do you all have, uh, I don't see, oh, there you go, okay, I was looking for.
Green light, red light.
Yep, there you go. Uh, one place.
On the chair, not to screw that up, like I did the first time I had to do it. I missed the yellow light.
Oh, oh, it's okay. Um, one place, uh, actually had like an actual traffic light up on the wall that they got off of an actual traffic boom, you know, somehow, and, and they used the traffic light there. Yeah, of, you know, managing that, obviously, uh, you know, I've seen it different ways, e- every chair, every group is different. And I've seen some places where the chair would be kind of a little more lenient and say, yeah, you know, like, finish your point, you know, you went over four minutes. And then the next person will get up and say, well, she got five minutes, so I'm gonna take five minutes. And then, you know, it kinda opens up a can of worms. Or I've seen someone trying to make a point, and then they get cut off and told to sit down, and I don't know if there's a right or wrong way, I think it's just based on what your community is and, and how you do things is the best approach. Obviously being important to, you know, give everyone equal time. I told folks that if you happen to find yourself getting challenged, decision-challenged, rarely is it a substantive due process issue where there's something illegal about the action. It's almost always a procedural due process thing. In terms of the procedure, something was missed, something wasn't done according to the correct procedures, and that's what really opens you up. Speaking on that front, um, you know, also just being aware of the different feces of, kind of, uh, an act, uh, performing an act, uh, uh, under your duty, kind of a malfeasance idea of wrongdoing. Typically, malfeasance is doing something wrong on purpose. That's malicious. Uh, your misfeasance, which is really unintentionally wrongdoing of just, you didn't know any better, and you accidentally did something wrong. Um, so the malfeasance might be taking a bribe, I think we can all see that is probably, probably bad, something we wouldn't wanna do, it's pretty straightforward. Um, you know, misfeasance might be, you know, just, uh, not being aware that we opened or closed the public hearing on the case, and a decision was made, it was missed, it was a mistake. Uh, and then we have also the non-feasance, and that's just not, not doing your role at all. And sometimes in smaller communities, uh, I've known some folks who are a little too eager to recuse themselves on a potential conflict of interest. But they recuse themselves so often that non-feasance comes into play, where are you even really fulfilling your role as a planning commissioner if you're just not, you're not doing it? Or, you know, if, if, if you're missing a certain number of meetings, kind of being careful not to, to kind of stray into that, that territory. I mean, really trying to avoid all those. And of course, uh, just working with, um, staff, um, really, the way the local government is structured is staff, they report up to the city manager, and the city manager reports to council. They are the elected officials. The executive is the city manager, and the different departments report to that person. The planning department actually doesn't report to the planning commission. I had a one planning commissioner threaten to fire me in a local government. And I was a little concerned, I told my boss, and he was like, he, I can fire, like, I can fire you, he can't fire you. You don't report to him on that. But, that said, staff is there, part of their role is to supply you with what you need to be successful in your role as planning commissioner. Again, not the expectation that you're experts in all these different areas, but they should bring that expertise to you, to help you deliberate, to serve that role, to provide the elected officials with the recommendations that they need. So, um, really, staff providing you with the staff report in a timely manner, so you have enough time to review it, to answer any technical questions for you, and to help bring that technical piece to you of anything that you need to make a good decision there. Also, you know, I, I do think, I don't know if, do you do like a, a pre-meeting with staff? Any like a prep meeting before?
We sometimes chat if we need to.
Yeah, I always, when I send out the email with the staff report, the agenda packet for the meeting, I try to make myself available for any questions, and we do get questions, we do like to try and make ourselves available.
I think I usually, I can, I email you if I need, if I'm like, wait a minute. Usually because I'm confused about something.
Yeah. Well, that's great that you do that, though, a lot of folks don't do that. And they'll just go into the meeting and, you know, creep into that misfeasance thing where they just, they don't know, so if you, it's an important skill to, if you have a question, to speak up about it, and staff is here to support you. So, if you're not sure about something, I mean, sometimes I'll see commissioners that don't wanna ask questions, 'cause they, they're a little nervous of, is this a dumb question? And the answer is no, it's not. It's really, it's your responsibility to ask the question if you don't know, even if it doesn't feel quite right to do it. Because, um, if you're making a decision and you're just not sure about something that's important to that decision, try to get that answer, if that you can, staff is there to support you on that. I, I do like having that pre-meeting, uh, we, we used to have our, a pre-meeting with our chair, and we would sit down and just run through the agenda with them and like, hey, you know, these are the items, be careful on this. This, this issue is complicated, so just, you know, if you have any questions for us, let us know. And we would run through it with them.
We, we've been going for an hour, does anybody need to take a five-minute break? Are we good? Do you need to take a five?
No, no, I, I could, I could go on, um, I gave a seven-hour talk one time, so.
We're not doing that.
I don't know, you might wanna get your money's worth, I mean.
Yeah, I get them just in time to, yeah, no, thanks. We'll come back, you're great.
And, uh, what about work sessions, do y'all have work sessions on?
We did one on Smith Farm. These are the only ones we've done. Smith Farm is a joint with council.
Ah, cool, that's awesome.
I do know that talks for the upcoming council that they're gonna want to try to have more joint work sessions to try to help the, um, help the meetings go by smoother rather than airing out and getting all the questions and having to revisit it, you know, two or three times, try and, that's the goal, I don't know, but I, I do know they've talked about it.
They do, we do seem to litigate things before the planning commission and then just relitigate them in almost the same way before council, and sometimes.
It's like a day of, and then, oh, I got thirty questions that we had a month to ask, and just have it done, and then we, you know, we gotta just kinda push the ball a little bit, so. I know it's a lot of extra work, but, um, on big topics, I think it, it's gonna be really helpful.
Yeah, okay.
Especially with us doing a new comp plan.
Yeah. I was gonna, y'all have already said a few things I was gonna say anyway, but I was gonna say, I recommend to have a joint meeting with council, I mean, like, once a year at least. I think it's good to just reconnect on that front. Work sessions are, are a good thing to have, and some, some localities will have a regular work session where they'll have their regular meeting once a month, and they'll also have a regular work session, and they'll work through, through issues. Other places, that's a bit of an overkill. If you're doing a comp plan, eh, might be something to think about, just having those work sessions more often. It's not a bad idea. And, yeah, we've kind of already hidden this one too, of just, um, you know, just kind of that conflict mediation, um, side of it. It's good to, during a work session, you can talk some of that out. If you've had some meetings where people have been extra mad, I don't know if you all have had any recently, or if there's kind of a, a docket coming up in the next few months where you think people are gonna be pretty upset. Eh, it's not bad to kinda plan for that and say, we might be going through a little bit of a rough patch here as a group. How are we gonna manage those kind of tough emotions? How are we gonna communicate that? How are we gonna get information out there? Cool, so that was kind of the first bit there in terms of role. I do have the next kind of sections here, it's a, I'm, I'm still pushing it, strategic plans. I think planning commissions can do that, I've seen planning departments do that. Uh, Montgomery County, Virginia, near Blacksburg, their department has a strategic plan, they have a vision statement. Uh, these are our principles, um, I, I think it's, it's a great thing to have, there's a book called The ABZs of Planning Management. It talks about the importance of planning departments having strategic plans. I think planning commissions can as well. And then I have a section here about bylaws, have y'all updated your bylaws recently? Okay. Has anyone read the bylaws?
Nope.
Okay, so we can talk about that. That's a good thing to talk about. Um, and then, you know, uh, procedures, as a group, procedure is always important. Checklists, how do you do things as a group? I think that's, you know, ripe for discussion with any planning commission, so.
Do we have a strategic plan?
Before we dive into that, anything else about role of the planning commission? Or are there any particular issues? Or are there any particular issues you've had in meetings that?
Oh, I do like the idea of having kind of a set, you know, to what degree will we let, you know, an aggravated individual, get to with a warning, what's a zero tolerance cutoff, you know, laying that out in advance so that it doesn't catch us off guard? And we don't all just look at each other like.
Do our bylaws address when we can cut people off or sit people down or?
It discusses the timeline for comments, public comment time. Um, I'm not sure how in depth it gets. I would need to go back and look at that.
Yeah, I, I would be interested in that. There's a, uh, what strikes me as potentially an obvious first amendment issue, but, um, you know, I think maybe we at least ought to be able to say during a public comment here, here, you know, during public comment, if there's vulgarity, profanity, personal attacks, the chair has a discretion to cut them off at any time. So at least we have a rule that we can point to and say, hey, this is our, this is the reason we're doing this.
Yeah, I agree. I'll, I'll send them out to y'all tomorrow, um, so you guys can look at them and if we need to make any amendments, we'll.
Yeah, I'd, that thought.
Times are changing and people's views are much shorter than they, than they were when I.
Yes, they are.
Well, you can always, you know, the old fashioned document, when people want to sign up for public comment, council meetings, I see what they need to do. The planning commission meetings, they also have to fill out, I mean, is it something that is simple to, to sign up, not just put your name and, um, you know, there's a little waiver. I understand that I have to be respectful of da, 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 da. And by signing this and requesting, then I, you know, so then they've read it, so there's shock or surprise. And do we have that issue? I mean, I've.
Oh, so, so I've seen just a couple of times, um, and both times, uh, with, one of them was Lana and, you know, she gave him a warning, like, we're not, we're not doing that, you know? But, um, again, not immediately shutting it off because everybody.
He's not one of our citizens.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha.
Every, everybody loses, you know, lose capacity by accident, you know, and things slip. Um, but, you know, reeling it back in and then, you know, being able to read the room and saying, okay, you're just coming up swinging. I don't necessarily need to give you a warning. I can cut you off right now.
But I think that's where having a rule, so we can say, this is what our rule is instead of, that way nobody can say, Will doesn't like me. He didn't let me talk as much as I'm, you know, or whatever.
Yeah. Well, and plus having a rule. So, I mean, if your kid is sick one night and you can't make the meeting, I don't know who the vice chair is.
Nigel.
Nigel, yeah.
But, you know, you might be doing an awesome job, but if you're gone that night and then Nigel has to step in, he, he, you know.
I never had.
Having something, having something that he can lean on and say, hey, look, these are the rules, man, like, this is what's laid out, can help him feel more.
Just some kind of.
Supported. Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, or, I mean, just a, a, a bylaw that says the planning commissioner has, the chair of the planning commission has the authority at any time during a public comment period to dismiss a speaker for, if the speaker exhibits any of the following behavior. You know, vulgarity, loot, whatever, profanity, vulgarity, rudeness. Guess we shouldn't put hostility or we couldn't, I could just dis, dismiss, dismiss, dismiss.
I mean, that's a good idea.
But yeah, I think, you know, just to make things as simple as possible.
But yeah, I've seen it twice and both of them were at council meetings.
Okay, yeah.
And it's over the pace like three years, so not very often.
Yeah. I have a, I, um, the class over, um, at UVA, they've got sixty-one students and we, we're, in the last week, and we do mock development cases and they, they submit rezoning cases. They take a real rezoning form, they come up with a real, you know, real rezoning case. And then the top four, we put it through a public hearing and I write scripts for the public and they yell things and, um, sometimes the students will kind of giggle and like, why are you making me yell this? I'm like, cause I was in a meeting where someone yelled that because, uh, we had one meeting, someone dressed up as a chipmunk, um, head to toe. And said he was, you know, John Chipmunk from tree one, one, nine. My family has lived here for numerous generations and I'm speaking for the forest and, I mean, gosh.
I'd let that guy go four minutes.
Yeah.
Lorax, I speak for the trees.
Yeah, we, we had someone just stand up and just start yelling at one of the commissioners, um, and again, I was guessing the commission just, it came out of nowhere. And they didn't know what to do. Um, I kept looking at the chair like, like, I was like, you need to control this. But they, it was, it wasn't his fault. They just were completely caught off guard. Um, any number of things.
We're gonna get the same energy and activity at the city council meetings. I mean, you mentioned the word security twice in your.
Yeah.
Powerpoints that I saw, I don't feel like we need that, but council.
Smith Farm, we got close to, I'll talk to you, I'll see you in the meeting, after the meeting in the parking lot. We never quite got there, but we got, I felt like we got close once. Never did I feel like, I mean, I, I went and talked to the guy after the meeting in the parking lot, so it was fine. He didn't threaten to beat me up or anything, but I feel like it's, it's something that I've been, having seen things go sideways in settings like that, just from my experience in the courtroom. It's something that I'm, I'm attentive to and attuned to for sure.
I would also say we probably wouldn't be surprised by it if there's a topic that's.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Exactly.
And if that's the case, then we can ask city staff to provide us with some security.
Yep.
Yeah.
And just in case it does get beyond, because we all know, social media lights up, our phones start to light up.
Yep.
Exactly, exactly right. We, we should have.
It's gonna be a hot topic. Let's get.
In my time on the council, right off the top of my head, I can only recall twice that there was heated discussion. The Smith Farm is one of them and the other one is Silver Creek. I think that is the one where the lady stood up and had the analysis from the water and, uh, sanctuary and all that. And there was a lot of people upset about that. They are the only two times that I can recall of first individuals coming in during the process and being upset. Many come in or post on social media after the fact. And I'm like, it was advertised, you had opportunity to come, you know, thinking to myself, you had opportunity to come and nine times over ten, there's empty chairs in the room. They don't, and it's a lot of misinformation out there too because I follow, uh, Nextdoor. That's one of the local apps that.
Yeah.
And the roundabouts that's been approved. You would not believe some of the stuff people said out there. That, you know, the city would, how they were, mainly how they were paying for it and who's, who was actually pushing it through. You know, so it's a lot of misinformation out there to get people riled up. If they would just come to the meetings, they wouldn't be so riled up.
Yeah, yeah.
And if folks, we are recording these.
Yep.
Um, we have, uh, uh, someone fired up on social media where I did was just link the, the minutes. And said the exact point in time of which you're discussing is at the eighth minute and forty-seven minute mark, you know, and here's a summary, synopsis of the minutes. I'd missed that meeting because I was out of the country, so I was actually watching it at the time it popped up on social media. So here's the link, here's three highlights from it, you know, please come to the next meeting. So with strategic planning, I would assume, and you mentioned communication. Is that appropriate? City staffers made a link, you know, I'm almost tempted every time we have a meeting to link it on the social media and just say, hey, if you haven't been able to make the meeting, here's what we talked about, here's the link, check it out.
It's been a long time since I've watched one of our meetings on, on YouTube. I've watched plenty of the council meetings and the agenda, the link to the agenda is in there because I watched the council meeting on one screen and follow along the agenda on the other.
I do, I, I like that idea because if, if nothing else, it's attempting to spur community involvement. I mean, it's nothing inappropriate.
Same thread with just, hey, this is, you know, which I appreciate it. I thought you managed fantastically, you know?
That, yeah, and that was a classic case of misinformation, right? Cause the phrase that was used in that specific post was, I can't believe this was approved, I think.
Right.
And I chimed in and said, hey, this is by right. You, technically we approved it, but, or it was approved, but we didn't have any discretion to deny it.
Yeah.
And, and I said, because I've been educated now, this is one of the things that the comprehensive plan should be.
Yeah.
We should look at in the context of the comprehensive plan.
And that's what I like us being on the same page too.
Yeah.
You know, because I do a lot on social media. I don't want to be anything up, upbound, so I would only link factual data points.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I think more people should be watching this.
It, it should. Like I said, that would only help us to actually get a pulse on what the city expects in the future. So I like that idea.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see any problem with, with posting that on there. Just the only thing to be careful with is, um, just if someone's posting stuff, just so the group's aware. Just kind of as a courtesy to everyone, just, um, that if someone gets questioned or anything, that y'all are keeping each other in the loop on things. There's a few things that planning commissioners and elected officials don't like. One of them is surprises. They don't like surprises so much and, um, so yeah, I think just keeping y'all, you know, but I don't see any problem with, with posting a link to the meeting minutes or.
Yeah, because most people nowadays don't get their news from mainstream media anymore. They get it from podcasts, they get it from X or, uh, what is it? Snapface? No, what?
Snapchat. I like that name back, yeah, yeah.
One of, one of the others, other sites, um, so, I mean, it's ea, it's, people can easily misinterpret something and then you're down a rabbit hole ten miles.
Yeah. Well, that and we're kind of in the time of someone can clip a quote or clip something out and it might be out of context.
Yeah.
And that's why it's good, you know, in that case of, hey, you know, here's, here's the minutes or here's the video, you can watch the context here of how this unfolds. I mean, it's part of the public record, but, um, yeah.
And with AI coming online more and more, you can string together whole speeches that never happened by just piecemealing words together that this person said in another setting.
Yeah.
And now you've got a.
Yeah. I mean, AI brings a lot of, I'm really trying to control myself here because AI is an interesting topic. I love talking about it. There's a whole world here, but a few things to it, um, yeah, I mean, there's that. Also, it can be a good tool. If you, uh, like Zoom, there's some other kind of AI functions. If you record your meeting, there's some platforms. I know, uh, a few where you can actually type in and ask a questions like, um, you know, what did Phil say during the meeting? And I'll, I'll pull like all the quotes or like, you know, Will might say, do I have any action items in this meeting? And I'll pull all the information and give it to you. Or if your sta, if, if staff is using AI or if you all are using AI, like, if you're using it, you, you really need to have AI policy. What's your policy with AI? What's appropriate, what's inappropriate? What, when do you need to let people know you're using it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I, I know a lot of people are beginning to use, what is it? Chat GPT? Is that what it is? Chat GPT? Uh, for various things.
Sure.
I read an article last week where it's beginning to creep into school districts across the country. People, people are doing, they aren't doing the homework. Somebody else has done the homework and they're pulling it up and the AI is doing the homework for them. Or writing the report and then printing off the key points to that report so that they can give a presentation about it, never having read the first word about it.
Yep. Yeah, that's definitely a big problem. It is, there was, uh, we saw, there's two news articles that happened to be stacked on top of each other on like Yahoo or one of those accounts. First one was, um, universities, their number one issue or concern is the use of AI. And then the one below it just randomly ended up there was a survey of top employers of, of top skills they're looking for. And number one was finding people who know how to use AI. And so it, it's kind of, I think we're after, going back to education, I think we're gonna have to reevaluate of how do we use these tools? I mean, uh, they're tools, so how can we use them, but use them in a, in an equitable way where you're not passing something off as your work when it's, when it's not.
Well, if you try to pass off as your work, eventually someone's gonna catch on and AI will do your work. So you won't have, you won't have, if AI is doing all the, all the research and, and the reports. You know, when AI curves forward, you're just not gonna have, you're not gonna have a job. AI is gonna be doing what you pretend to do.
Yeah.
You know, I know when I was going through school, getting my degree, every paper I turned in, the professor ran it through and I forget the name of the program. But it searched that report to see if anything that you cited, that, that you said was cited correctly. And whether or not it had ever been used in another report in the same context.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, um, I'll add one more and I'll, I'll jump back to this, but, um, I think Denver has a, an AI front desk planner. And they've uploaded their zoning ordinances into the AI and you ask it zoning questions and it answers it. Apparently it's been pretty successful, the pilot project. Yeah, so, I mean, so a, as a group, I mean, this goes for a department, goes for an organization, goes for a planning commission, I think as well of, you know, going back to Peter Drucker, um, kind of famous in management, um, is, you know, every agency, every policy, every program, every activity should be confronted with the questions of what is your mission? Is it still the right mission and is it still worth doing? And, and that's, I think, not only our mission, but what we're doing as a group, is it worth doing? Of course, you all have things that you're required to do, you have to do. But, um, is there anything else that we're doing that, um, that isn't aligned with, with what your mission or the way you do it that's not aligned with that, that mission? As I mentioned, you know, going back to the private sector, vision-based organizations or firms are eight times more successful than those that do not have a vision statement, that don't have some sort of mission in mind. You know, I think if you're like in a department setting, um, or organizational setting, you know, the, the focus these days on management is really empowering employees. Uh, but if you try to empower someone, but they don't have some sort of mission of what it is you're trying to accomplish, uh, you're not empowering them, you're just creating a rogue. You're just gonna do a bunch of stuff and you're gonna have to, you know, have a little talk with them. They're gonna feel discouraged and then you've just, you've just hurt your employee, uh, and hurt your, have long-term chances with them. So, um, really essential for, for any, I think, any department. I, again, I pointed back to, um, Montgomery County, their planning department has, um, a vision statement, a mission statement, and then their guiding principles. They have four guiding principles. Uh, they have printed, uh, it's in the office. Everyone has access to it. So I think effective thing to do. People view, use these interchangeably sometimes between a vision and a mission statement. I've seen it one way versus the other. But just gonna go with the standard way I've seen it is usually that vision statement is really that aspirational, it's that north star. It's what is it you're trying to really, what's your true purpose? What is it you're here to try to accomplish? Usually your vision doesn't change. It's just, it's a north star. It's always there. That's what you're always trying to accomplish, trying to do. Uh, mission statement is more of a how do you accomplish it? Uh, mission statement is more of a how do you accomplish it? How, how do you, how do you get to that? Um, what is common is a vision statement should be pretty concise, like a sentence. Mission statements are sometimes a little bit longer than that. Mission statements can also change because as the organization advances, where it is changes. Um, so the mission should change every now and then, the vision should not typically. So I think we use this one, uh, two meetings ago, but Amazon, their, their vision is to be Earth's most customer-centric company. Where customers can find and discover anything they might want to buy online. Um, I don't know, seems like they're getting there. Uh, mission is we strive to offer our customers the lowest possible prices, the best available selection and the utmost convenience. So that's the how, how do we get to that vision, kind of those two statements there? Um, I like to use, well, it might be called like the three AM test of, uh, why are we here? What is it we're trying to accomplish? What's our mission or what's our vision? Uh, should be able to call somebody up, three o'clock in the morning, pick it up and ask them, they should be able to answer that question. If they can't, eh, might not be a great mission. I was with the Planning District Commission, we had a strategic plan, we had a vision, we had a mission statement. Um, we put it on everything, it was on an agenda, we had little note cards we'd put in our breast pocket. And at the top, you'd see our mission statement facing out. And so just always supposed to be a part of what we're doing. Um, and some guiding principles of everything we do, we try to go back to that as a group. Um, going back, there's the, the northbound train analogy here and really. It, it's a famous one in management, uh, theory here of, um, this isn't a bus, this isn't something that moves around. Train has set tracks, it has a set direction, so what is the direction that you're setting as a group? And part of that, of what is the direction here is, is one, expectations. So when you set a direction for an organization or a group, what are your expectations? What are the expectations you have for the position that you hold? What are your, what are your expectations of each other? I think that comes into play with planning commissions too of, what are your expectations for your fellow planning commissioners on the other side here? Um, what do they expect from you? Uh, what are your values? I think that's something that's worth writing down. Um, what are your values as a group? Um, kind of what are those core principles? I mean, character integrity, um. These are things that it, it's, it's good to know as a group, just kinda write them down, doesn't have to be anything fancy, it could just be one page. That Montgomery County example, it's one page, they have a one-page document, that's it. But it does lay out, these are our values, this is what we're trying to do as a group. Uh, objectives of what you all are trying to do, yes, you have rezoning cases, you have special use or conditional use permits that come through. Um, but I think that planning commissions can have a work program. So we're coming up at the end of twenty, I don't, I don't have a watch, I don't know why I did that, come up through the end of twenty twenty-four. Um, of, I think y'all might have an annual report, but really, um, have the annual report of what have we done? Um, you're looking at a new year, twenty twenty-five. Um, how do you measure success as a group? How do you know, when you get to the end of twenty twenty-five and you feel really good about tha- that year, you think, wow, dang guys. It's a planning commission, we really nailed it this year, we did a great job, we can feel good about this. What does that look like? Uh, what are your measures of success? Um, do you have any measures of success?
That is a good question, what is our measurements of success? It's, can't be numerical of how many things we approve or disapprove of, I think it's more of. I would feel that it's how we've worked with staff to try to come together and iron down what. What their visions are and what they're working towards for the city and us, you know, blending with the community. And bringing their thoughts and concerns forward and how well we mesh together. If we're able to work together and, um, have more, I'd say successes, but more. Joint visions and, and working and compromising to get to a place where everybody can be happy. Um, or at least content, then that would be a measure of success.
Yeah, it's not gonna be results-oriented, right? Like, we're not a results-oriented group, it's gonna be process-oriented. It's gonna be, did we equitably administer our process? Did we follow the law for meetings? Did we, everybody get, did the public feel like they got a fair shake? And did we give the applicants, you know, the applications a fair, equitable, objective look? I think that that's the way I would. Try to think of, I think I would try to think about it, right? Cause it's not, you're right, there are no numbers, we're not a.
Or, or you could say, have the processes we put in place enabled the community to. Meet their needs and expectations of what city government should.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I like that view too of kind of meet their expectations. Again, keep them, you know, y'all are the front desk of the government in many ways. Um, and so you're the face of the community in a lot of ways. Y'all have identified a few concerns and issues, housing's come up, education's come up. You got a comp plan coming up, so you'll address those things, but um, I mean, I, I think. As you look at the next year, staff is gonna give you applications that come through, that's gonna happen. Subdivision plots are gonna come through, these things are gonna pop up that you need to address. But you can, you can look at what is it we wanna tackle this year? Obviously you have a comp plan, so then maybe that's an easy answer for this year, but um, but you know, like, what's our work program? Um, y'all have how many meetings in a year?
Twelve.
Twelve meetings in a year, so you get twelve chances to come together and you might have work sessions? Like, how many work sessions do you wanna have? Um, depends on what it is you wanna tackle as a group. Um, so if there's some real, again, you all are here as the venue to work through some of these technical issues. And while you're not maybe a technical expert, you have access to technical expert, experts to bring them in to help you kinda work through it. So, you know, like, what are some of the main issues you wanna work through? That's kind of a hypothetical question here, but. Um, and you know, I, again, I think it's fair to write down, what's your work program? Um, what's our plan for twenty twenty-five? What is it we wanna accomplish? Um, you know, again, you know, it's, you know, eight forty. Uh, y'all put a lot of time into these types of things, I mean, you're here. Um, you're putting a lot of effort into it and you wanna make sure that when you get to the end of the year, you're looking back and you're feeling positive and good about. About what you've done, it's a lot of toil that goes into this. So, um, so part of that too is kind of setting reward, kind of that fourth piece. We're not talking monetary rewards here, unless y'all getting compensation I'm not aware of, but. Um, but you know, what are your rewards and kind of thinking, writing that down of what would be rewarding to you as you move forward? And I think if you have a, a mission statement as a group, what it is you wanna do as a group. Maybe that starts with your own personal mission of why you're here. Maybe if y'all share that with each other, you can come up with some sort of statement, something that can help keep you all motivated. Um, cause I think it is hard work, especially with the comp plan coming up, folks, that's a lot of work. And when you get through those times where you're feeling, yeah, a little frustrated, a little worn down. Uh, having that mission is what helps keep us focused when, when we're not feeling all that motivated otherwise, so. Um, you know. I think, uh, you know, again, really having, setting that, that mission. Um, you, you know, it's one of those things, if you had a work session to work it out, I think getting the main themes down, don't worry about the wordsmithing right away. Don't worry if it takes a lot of time, a good mission statement takes time, it should, it should never be rushed. Um, it should also be something that's significant to you, which would just be a cookie cutter, I see that all the time. I do a lot of strategic plans, well, I don't know, a lot, I've done several for organizations. And sometimes I'll see like, they grabbed a mission statement from someone else and just copied and pasted it over, like, no, it, it has to be yours, it's your mission statement. And so it needs to motivate you, it needs to energize you, it needs to make your group work together as a team. Um, and so it should not be rushed, it should take, really take its time. So it should be something that energizes you, what, what makes you excited? What makes you excited to be here? Uh, why are you here? Um, it should be something that's, that's memorable, it should be something that's kind of bigger than yourselves, even bigger than the commission itself. Kind of, wha- what's that thing you're really trying to do? Um, how are you really trying to help the community? What is it you're trying to do here as a group? Um, and you know, some things here that could be part of your work program, it could be things like. Uh, tracking your conditional or special use permits. If you see the same conditions every single time, every single one. Then maybe it's time to update the ordinance and just make that as part of the ordinance, those conditions, so you're not having to. Run some poor person through the process again, um, or at least just take that off, you know, take that one condition off, build it into the ordinance. Um, you all see a lot, you work with the ordinance and with the comp plan more than anyone else in the local government, other than staff. More than council, more than any other department, you all are working with it every single time you meet, every single time you get a question, so forth and so forth. So you know it better than the vast majority in the city government. So keeping track of those issues, um, what are issues with your ordinance, what are issues with the comp plan? Even logging that, kind of build it into an annual report, that could be part of your work program of. We've logged these issues, we wanna try to address these issues and be more proactive about it. Do you have a quick one on here? Bioloss, which won't take very long at all. Um, but I mean, what do you feel about a strategic plan? Is that, I, I'm not trying to sell you anything, you don't, you don't have to do it, but. I, I don't see a lot of planning commissions actually do that, I think, but I think there's an opportunity there.
My turn, you go ahead, you go.
I feel like our comprehensive plan is going to be, a strategic plan would be a microcosm of the, of the comprehensive plan at this stage. I'd be very curious to see, not to copy and paste, but what Montgomery County did with their one pager. And look at creating some value statements, some mission statements, you know, look at it from, you know, the personal, the, the. I love the way of looking at it at the end of the year, what do we say we want to have gotten accomplished?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I see some real value in that as a new commissioner coming in to sort of help.
Yeah.
Guide sort of, you know, what our twenty twenty-five is gonna look like. I don't know if I'm all in strategic planning process with the comprehensive plan coming up, and I don't know what that would look like.
Yeah.
But that's just my sort of two cents.
I would, I would be curious as we move into developing the comp plan and. Trying to align them with the hub that you had up there.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know if there's a way to do it, I guess Alisan would be the best authority on it. Since the comp plan was last developed. What are the most common items that have, for CUPs that have come before the planning commission? That we could take into account and maybe redo one or two ordinances and then fold them into the comprehensive plan. So people don't have to come and apply for conditional use permits every single time anymore. I don't know how that information is captured upfront. Is, is it captured in a way that, or stored in a data warehouse in a way that you could, it could be extracted and pulled out?
Well, I would have to go back and take a look at the CUPs that refer to since, uh, twenty eighteen, which is our last, I would say, update. And sort of see if there are any.
Reoccurring themes is what I'm looking for, you know, twelve times we've had the same issue, eight times we've had the same. And maybe with the comprehensive plan, we can put something in place that better allow staff to pull that data. For the next group.
I think it goes back to, I mean, what do we have? Three applications in a row for trailers, basically.
Yeah.
And I think my, my primary concern, once we approved the first one was.
Snowball.
On what ba- well, yeah, there's certainly that effect, but on what basis are we gonna, you know, we, we, there has to be some equity between these issues. You know, between these applications and we, it can't be as simple as, that one belongs to a family, so we liked and they brought their kids and that, that, they were really nice. Um, and this one, the person wants to rent it out and we're not really interested, you know, um.
You gotta set the criteria for it.
Yeah, I felt like that was a place where, uh, you know, you, council did what they did with those applications, but. That was a place where I felt like we needed more ordinance, where we needed some, uh, you know, something to address those particular issues. So I think that's a perfect example though.
That, that could also be a good, um, action on your work program of. Um, like being relatively new, did you have a orientation packet when you came in?
That's a good question, I did get a bunch of data points, information in the past, agendas and minutes and whatnot. Um, I reviewed some previous board meetings of my own, formal packet? Did I get a formal packet?
I did not get a formal.
So, I mean, that, that, that could be, you know, um, you know, that could be a goal of yours is. When new planning commissioners come on of develop resources so they can get onboarded as quickly as possible.
This is the things for staff to do.
Yeah, sorry, uh, or like, on, on the tracking of, of those, you know, uh, of those CUPs as an example, I mean. Um, you know, that could be so, you know, something for the commission to kind of give some attention to of. Hey, you know, let's work with staff to kind of track some of these and what is it we're looking for and, and what would be helpful to us, so. I mean, I, I think there's, there's things like that, that can, um, like. What sounds like simple actions, but when you add them all up is, are really helpful for you all as a group. And going back to Jeff, what you were saying too of, kind of what is the mission? I mean, the mission could be, you know, to implement the comp plan, um, and the comp plan is the real vision. Um, that's, I think it's totally fair. But the main thing on the mission or vision front is just, it has to be, be inspiring to you, it has to be something you feel good about, whatever that is.
I love what Will said, just about process, I mean, I was taking some notes here, but the things that jumped out at me was, A, make sure they've been heard.
Yeah.
That pops and then what Will was saying about equitable, fair, objective, legal process.
Yeah.
Uh, that gets me fired up, making sure people are heard, making sure it's fair.
Yeah.
Uh.
Well, but my concern about, yes, my concern about intentional growth. Right, like, we're a ministerial body, we're not a, in spite of the fact that I think we all have strong feelings around these issues, like. I don't really see our job as to, just to set that policy so much as it is to implement it. Right, like the, the, the what direction, I'm struggling with the metaphor here, like the what direction we're sailing isn't really up to us. It's the, it's the how we get there part of it, that it's, it's hard to make sure that, that all of those processes are right, I mean, am I wrong about that or?
No, no, I mean, um.
So I, I, so I. I, I, how do I wanna put this? I struggle with, with. Trying to be reflective about my own bias, my own experiences and, you know, the fact that. The, the traffic on Rawser from the dump trucks from a by rights subdivision that we had no discretion to deny, that I have to sit behind every day. Makes me furious. And so my concern about that and having, you know, especially having talked to a ton of people that I wouldn't have talked to over the last three months. Um, I, I worry, I worry about us becoming too results-oriented for two reasons. One is I'm not, I'm, I'm concerned about us getting out over our skis in terms of like actually setting policy as opposed to, to implementing policy. I think maybe the comprehensive plan is the better place to say that's where we wanna focus on these things. Um, the other thing is like, I, I fear. For what a planning commission could become if we get into the business of setting policy. And, and the council changes and we all see things the same way, more or less, right? Let's say we all see things the same way, more or less, right? And we agree on what good ideas are or are not, and we implement those things and the city council. And we agree on what good ideas are or are not, and we implement those things, and the city council changes radically, and we've set the precedent that we can make up, we can legislate development from, from this committee, and they say, you guys are all out, putting people in there who like something different, and they start legislating from this commission in a way that we don't like, I mean, I, I, so that's, the notion of setting that precedent concerns me a little bit, though I agree completely with what you're saying. That's why I think my focus, at least my takeaway from what we've talked about in these work sessions, my focus for us as a commission is to, I think, is to be more process oriented as opposed to, to goal oriented, or outcome determinant orient, outcome oriented, if that makes sense.
So what is our role in the strategic plan, in the comprehensive plan? Because we're obviously, when things, we're not approving or disapproving things, we're just giving feedback to council on that we reviewed it and looked at it, and we've either blessed it, or you know, and it's council's decision. Comprehensive plan, are we giving feedback, or, you know, to council on this, I mean, where does that, where does our role fit in that? I want to fall within the parameters that are set by that plan. I want to be asking the question, does it fit within the plan that we set up? Is there a, do we have a vision, a voice in that vision?
Yeah. It's a tricky question, and I'll try to give the shortest answer I can. I think right in that council are the policymakers, they're the elected officials, and so they are the ones giving the legislative authority to approve the plan, to approve ordinances, to approve budgets, they're the policymakers. However, and again, going back to that nineteen twenty-eight legislation of that, that is what their role is, however, again, you are the deliberators, because they can't unpack all this stuff. It's not, they don't have the time for it, they, they're just, it's just, it's impossible. So that's, at this group, is really to unpack all those issues, to really dive into it, to be the venue where the public comes in, and to have that objective, technical deliberation, and then send that recommendation up for them for their consideration. They don't have to follow your recommendation, but it's generally a good idea too, because that's where all the discussion has happened, and that's all been worked out, especially if you're dealing with comp plans, which is the policy document. In the state of Virginia, really, the comp plan falls under the planning commission. It's the planning commission's responsibility to update and manage the comp plan. It's the legislative body's responsibility to approve it, and to, it's their legislative to-do list. So, so there's that, if that's helpful. What Will was saying too, I, I thought was really interesting, because it hits on a debate that no one talks about in the planning field, and it makes me frustrated that we don't talk about it, but there is a little bit of a divide in the field, there's a debate that is, goes unsaid by many. There are some that says, as, as planners, uh, we are here to implement, we, uh, we're not the policymakers. Policymakers, they're elected, they make the policies, they pass the ordinances. We are here to fulfill that, in a democracy, people vote, they have these elected officials, they set all that, and we're here to support that, and that's our role, period. There's another side over here that says, yes, the elected officials are put in place through our democratic republic that we have, so they are put in place, they are the final decision makers, however, we also are either experts or have access to the experts, and we're here to help still be leaders in the community, and we still have the responsibility to, to find, to research, to explore ideas and approaches, and maybe even advocate for issues, and then send those up to the, to the elected officials, knowing they might deny it, but we still have to be here to help to serve that role. And those are two pretty different ideas, and I know people who kind of have this idea, and some people have this idea. And I'm not saying one is right or one is wrong, it's just they're different ideas. And so I have seen some planning commissioner, planning commissions that are very, like, we're just here to deliberate, and here's our recommendation, we're not gonna really get, we're not gonna, you know, push for anything. I've seen others that are very advocate, if we think of it more as like a needle on a gauge here, I've seen some that are way this way, and some that are way this way. What's right for you, I can't say, it totally depends on you as a group.
So procedurally, we're gonna get some beginning document, like, this, the, when, for the comprehensive plan, there will be a bunch of folks who submit bids to try to, to do it, right? And then they'll submit something, and then we're gonna do sort of the fine tuning, is that right? Procedurally?
Well, once, once we've selected our consultants, um, they'll start. We are currently in the process of selecting a consultant to assist us with the comp plan. I anticipate making that decision for the end of the year, and then in 2025, that's sort of officially going to kick off. First part will be a data collection, public engagement, and there'll be multiple parties involved in that, including planning commissioners, and also city council members of the community. Once that phase is kind of done, we'll start, sort of, start, beginning processes of drafting the plans, vision, goals, chapters, and each chapter or each part of the comp plan will hopefully be embedded with the community, and with planning commissioners, feedback will be gathered, which will help advise it until you reach that final document, which will then be put up, you know, for you all for approval, or a recommendation of approval, or hopefully approval, and then proceed on to the city council. Roughly, that's, that's the process.
So it sounds like, I'm just trying to close this loop, because I was really a tag on to Jeff's question. And that, there is, depending on, I guess, your view of where our role is on that gauge. And that's, you're right, that's the place for that discussion for us. And I like that, because that feels like the place where we can be a little bit more goal oriented, as opposed to, I, I just, I struggle with, and again, I mean, just to draw back to that particular example, where I felt like we needed more ordinance, like, I feel some obligation to make sure there's some, there's a, there's a high, that we're doing the same thing the same way as often as possible, which is what concerns me about being goal oriented. So, but no, I, I mean, I there will be room, I assume, in that process for us to reinforce, you know, the public feedback they get, I assume, or say, hey, we think this should change here, or this is what we've seen. Is that right?
Yeah, um, you know, the comments gathered on each part of it will be and working with consultants, they'll be sort of incorporated into whatever that final document turns out to be. What is presented to us as an initial draft is probably not quite as steady, based on feedback from, planning commission from the public. Those will, will change, based on that.
What is the timeline for the, uh, comprehensive plan to be redone? I mean, when will we be, when do you see us reviewing it?
Um, the process, we're expecting to kick off the process in January. Then from there, it'll be anywhere from probably a year to two years. Eighteen months is sort of how long it'll take to reach that final document that goes into planning, so it's a lo- it's gonna be a long process.
And we're just gonna quit doing everything else.
No more developments, no more zoning applicants.
It's a lot. I mean, you think about what we go through, the, think about what we went through when they wanted to tear down a shed. They wanted to tear down a shed in the tree streets, think about what we went through for that. One that no one could see. Put the whole city, you know, and then just the back and forth, so, you know, kind of getting an idea and, and then taking into consideration the growth that we have. The growth is gonna come in the next two years, you know, it's gonna kind of transform that as well, so. I personally don't envision it being significantly different than the existing one. It's, they're gonna have some changes, but we, you know, there's still some areas that made sense back then, that make more sense now, because we have growth in certain areas.
We have to use some dump truck language for.
Oh, my lord.
No, I mean, I, I think what that boils down to, though, right, is, like, do you think, how much do you think we're getting it right, right now? Right, if you think we're getting it right most of the time right now, and the data supports that, I guess, then we won't have a lot to change, but if we don't think, or if the public doesn't think we're getting it right most of the time.
Which would be a great dialogue.
Yeah, it'll be entertaining, that's for sure.
Well, the rea- the reason I say I don't envision it changing significantly is because the goal, the, so some of the changes that have happened in the last four years, say, was really spurred by a lack of activity in certain areas, so we've really only had one or two scenarios where rezoning was an issue, right? So you have your buy right and, and, and density issues, but.
But for example, right, if you share the view that I have heard, you know, some people have said, that there is a, there are places in the city that it doesn't make sense that we have extremely dense zoning. Now, some of those places, like Hope and Parkway, the horse is out of the barn, right? But if they're undeveloped places where the, where, you know, we don't feel like the zoning density, existing zoning density accurately reflects, then we're gonna go through the comprehensive plan and the zoning map. And it's, and it's not gonna be if we feel, if the public, if the data and the public feels that way, and that's something we've got to address, then this, it could be a sea change.
Yeah, well, so here's my question. The, the biggest area, because again, you know, the amount of land within the city is finite, right? So we're developing a lot of land, so, you know, the significant amount of property that's left undeveloped is constantly shrinking, right? It's not really growing. But say there's an area that would, you know, long-term future looks like that would benefit to have it zoned differently, even though it's fully developed. And we say, okay, if, if, you know, this mobile home development were to go under, or become, could, could you, I mean, I guess you can rezone that parcel or that, that area to what you envision it being in the future, if that was to ever leave, to where it can stay there as long as it wants, but if they were to, you know, hightail it out of town, and, and, you know, vacate property, or they decided, you know, financially it just doesn't make sense to continue on running it that way, that they could then sell for development, for, uh, commercial, for retail, or for industry, would we, now, in that regard, I could see us making, you know, significant changes that doesn't affect existing, but affects, you know, if they were to, to move on or change. We can do that, so.
Yeah, you, so, um, with property rights, zoning is not the vested right, so the local government can change the zoning on any piece of property whenever they want. Now, they have to go through the same process, so they have to go through, you have to have your public hearing, just like it was an applicant, because you have to treat it the same. But yeah, they, you can make changes to the zoning map. You know, that's usually
Well, that's your hot button issue.
Sometimes, it depends on if you're upzoning versus downzoning. You can also upzone and downzone through the text changes, so you can make a te- a zoning text amendment that downzones properties too, so you're not changing the zoning map, but you're changing the intensity that's allowed in that area.
Okay, so in that regard, I could see sweeping changes. Because then it's like a candy land map, because that, you know, existing properties are grandfathered, and you can't force somebody to tear something down or rezone it. But you can say
Make sure that it never gets rebuilt the way it looks now.
Yeah, you can say, if you, if you were to vacate the property, that, you know.
Well, and that's kind of the, of, if you're gonna do a zoning change after the comp plan update, you know, I think with any plan update, usually, public engagement's gonna be the most expensive part, and time-intensive part. And if you want to roll into a zoning update, it's probably gonna have to put even more into that process, so that when you move on to that zoning map amendment or zoning text amendment, if you did that, it would require even more need for having a very thorough public engagement process. If you're gonna go through it and say, like, eh, we might update the code, like, probably not, then eh, it probably doesn't need to be as intensive, but if you're gonna roll into some changes like that, that's gonna really need, like, as a group, just a really that focus on really communicating to the public, having those communication, those talking points down pat, having a strategy for that, I mean, all those things.
Do you mean changing the zoning designation for specific parcels, or changing, like, let's say we're gonna, you know, RS one says this, and now we're gonna make it mean something different?
I think, could be both, it, it depends on to what degree you want to change it, but anytime you change the zoning map amendment, that tends to get more attention. Because they get that notice that their property is gonna get rezoned, and that's gonna get their attention, and it's gonna get the attention of everyone around them when they get that letter. But, you know, it, it, it totally depends on the scale of the change. If it's just like little tweaks, like, we're just gonna change the setbacks, eh, you might not get a whole lot of, a whole lot of attention, but it doesn't sound like you're in that territory, it sounds like it's more like possible density change.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're looking at, you know, what makes sense for future development.
Yeah.
You know, if certain properties, you know, were to not become viable anymore, you wouldn't want somebody who's willing to, you know, take, to put the same thing in, and you, you say the future of the city would, would benefit from, you know, restaurants and retail in this area, and, you know, it didn't make sense, you know, back when the property was first purchased, and, and, you know, zoning allowed that. But for the future, you know, this area started to develop, it's a really attractive area, so we want to take advantage of the opportunity in a comprehensive plan to say we envision potentially, if anything else is done with this property in the future, that this is what we want, you know, we no longer want it to be, um, you know, high-density residential, we want this to be, you know, retail and, and commercial use. With the, with the setbacks, the way that they're outlined in our ordinances already, when you have commercial that borders, you know, residential, you have buffers and things that need to be in place.
Well, and again, if you look over the hill, I mean, Charlottesville did some pretty sweeping changes of their zoning code right after their comp plan update, so they did a comp plan update, rolled into sweeping changes across the city, and I, I think, I think those are important, those are being challenged. But again, that's, you know, even more so the importance of if you're gonna get challenges on a procedural due process thing, and if they can't challenge the code, then they might challenge the things that justify the changes, so. I, I'm not an expert in it, I, I don't know exactly what they're challenging, but sometimes you'll see challenging the comp plan itself, was that done correctly? And then they'll, they might go after the ordinance itself, and just anything they could try to find to try to So yeah, I mean, um.
Ruin everything.
You know, just, you know, sometimes sweeping zoning changes are appropriate, but just knowing that if, if you make a big, bold plan, people might not pay much attention. But again, go back to what Phil was saying, the importance of this document of, you know, then when you come in with the ordinance change, that's when people show up and get, you know, get more enthusiastic about it. And so trying to like, if that's the direction you all go, kind of package some of that into the comp plan, and have the comp plan kind of carry some of the load there for you, so that when you get to the zoning part, everyone's, everyone knows what's happening, they feel comfortable with it, they've been heard, they might love it, they might hate it, but they've been at the table, and they've been a part of the process. And so trying to package them together is kind of a good way, and as we mentioned, like, eighteen months, like, that's, that's a lot of runway to to work on those issues. I know, I'm just gonna flip through super quick, like, half a second on one. Bylaws, if you haven't reviewed them, I mean, I would recommend reviewing them once every two years. I think just a look at it once a year, I think is good. The bylaws are the constitution of the group, so kind of like, it's good to have other documents, like procedural documents, things like, what are our procedures, what is our communications plan, what is this, what is this? Those are all separate, that's not part of the bylaws, but the bylaws is the foundation of it. Having a good set of bylaws is also, can make things more legally defensible. Can make things more legally defensible too, if there's some sort of dispute or issue, uh, if that's the constitution of the group, someone could go into that. Maybe challenge a few things here and there, um, so it's important to have all that laid out, it could happen, there are also. Um, kind of the, your set agendas of how those are structured for each meeting. Um, so, I mean, it, it's, it's one of those things that a lot of folks don't read, I mean, that's pretty common, but, um. Best practice is to be familiar with them, and, I mean, again, for each individual person to take a look at it. To give it a read-through once a year, just as a refresher, and then for the whole group, you know, every two years, if you did it in twenty twenty-two, eh, it's kind of up. For kind of a group review, and just make sure you're, you're comfortable with it. Um, just flipping through just as quickly of operating procedures, I mean, think of those as like the laws or what's implemented in the bylaws, but. You know, um, you know, we hit on that a little bit with the strategic parts, but, you know, things like checklists, if you do travel, how are you compensated? Um, uh, what are your expectations of your, of, of each other? Do you have an annual report? Um, how do you track your decisions? Um, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of decisions, a lot of CUPs made, how do you track those things? How, how do you know the decisions you've made in the past? Is it easy to find? Or do you have to, you know, go through minutes and is it all buried in there? Um, what's your website look like? Does your website? Is it clear about who you are and what you're doing, and if people went online to try to find information on decisions you made, can they find that easily? Um, is it, you know, so just, uh, having all that up there, you know, working with staff on staff reports, making sure it's, they're reports that work for you too. I love checklists, I make a checklist every day, every week, work through it, it's color-coded, uh, checklists are great, um. So, uh, for each other, have a checklist, uh, one thing, I talked to one, uh, our latest planning commissioner group about, um. They were unsure about what they could consider or not consider with rezoning cases, and what they could say or not say, and I was like, make a checklist, um. State code, boom, there's a section, it lists what you can and cannot say in terms of your justifications, turn it into a checklist, and just. Have it there on the desk, it's not cheating, and just look at it and check, make your statement, and then you're good. So, um, just having those processes and procedures in there, you know, it only helps you feel more confident about what you're doing. But that's not bylaws, bylaws, constitution, and these are other procedural pieces that layer on top of it.
And understood to hear you guys are gonna shoot us bylaws tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll, um, get bylaws sent out to y'all tomorrow, and if you'd like, we could also pull the Gummer County's, uh, plan that they have, and send it up too.
I can forward that to you, and it's for the planning department, but it, it applies just equally to planning commission too.
Be curious.
Yeah.
I figured you'd just ask AI.
You know?
I've done it before, yes.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you all, I hope this is helpful.
Education.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Extreme, man.
Yeah.
Should we have a planning commission pickleball day?
Sure.
Get all the commissioners out, some bonding, place a pickleball, I don't know.
No business discussions.
We, that's true, we can't talk business, other, if, if I yell at Jeremy to get out of the kitchen, will that end up in the minute? It's a pickleball tournament.
Well, say, uh, it's funny you said kitchen, because I was thinking when you were saying the planning commission, so the planning commissioners like the cooks, and then the city council. Taste, test, or the food testers. We put in all the work.
Yeah.
And do all the research, and pull out what we want, and we put it on a plate and give it to them, that, you know, is the goal.
Yeah.
And if they really are like, well, what's in it, well, okay, come have a joint session.